It's now six thirty. I'll call the meeting to order. Kathy, could we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Gaines?
Present.
Mr. Hanos?
Here.
Mrs. Boland?
Here.
Mr. Carlin? Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Mrs. Sylvia?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we pause for a moment of silence? We have several people that we lost since the last meeting. Ray Kane, uncle of Elizabeth Brett and Colleen Soars. Kenneth Matson, grandfather of Bethany Burghetta. Philomena Grimes, aunt of Andrew McCarthy. Shirley Pasqualix, mother-in-law of Janice Mascarelli. Anne L. Rembus Jones, cousin of Marson Rembus. Ed Barrowby, brother of Margaret Leary. Thank you. This is a momentous occasion tonight. This is our last official meeting of this school committee. Is there any public comment before I start rambling?
No, there is not.
Okay. I'd like to just take a moment and thank Mr. Robert Leary, who is hanging, waiting for some hanging chads to be resolved between him. I might, the next chair might have to make this speech for him. We don't know. But for now, for Mr. Hanos, for now, Mr. Leary is on the short end of the chat. And it appears that he needs thirty-one votes to upset Mr. Hanos and put him on the end of the chat. But I'd just like to say, sixteen years ago, Mr. Leary and I came on the school committee together with Dave Gordon, I believe. And he and I lasted, Mr. Gordon gave up after two years. And it was apparent from the day we had our orientation that Bobby and I were going to have some fun. Over the years, we've disagreed a lot, but we've agreed a lot. And I've come to the conclusion that I like the guy, in spite of his penny pigeon. But I've had, I've developed a real fondness for Mr. Leary. And on those occasions when we do agree, it's momentous. We have to look at each other and smile. But I'm gonna miss him if he doesn't, I'm gonna miss one of, one of them. But after sixteen-
No, both of them are big ones.
Oh, gosh.
Could be both of them. I hope.
No, can't be unless I quit and you don't-
It's either or.
No, well, we're not gonna talk about that. I just want Bobby to know that we appreciate your service.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And if I had my way, I'd, I'd call somebody, but I don't know anybody.
Thank you. I thought, really, about not coming here tonight and I feared I'd own up to it. But elections, and I'm not gonna make any speeches, obviously, elections are not about candidates. They're about people who voted. And I could sit here and tell you for the last sixteen years and talk about all the accomplishments and all the disappointments that were on this committee. But what I will tell you about is all the friendships I made in the committees now and over the past sixteen years. And that's more important to me than anything else.
And I'm one of them, right? Thank you.
Let's give him a hand.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll have a student update.
Hello, I'm Yana Tolich.
Thank you, my pleasure.
So, um-
Well, excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to compliment the, the two of our people out in the audience who ran for office and, you know, weren't successful this year. And they've come back tonight. It would have been so easy not to come back. But the fact that you're both here, Mrs. Hayler and Mr. Nistern, really shows a lot about your character and your commitment to Newport Public Schools, and we thank you. And we also have Ray Gomes in our audience who's going to be taking on, he actually came in number one for votes. And I'm sure almost everybody here had a sign in their yard. Two hundred and fifty-nine of them out in town, was it?
Can you have that many quotes?
So, anyway, I just wanted to point that out before we moved on.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and welcome back.
Hi, I'm Yana Tolich. So I'm gonna start with the sports update. Our volleyball team has ended their season seventeen-zero, perfect season, taking home two titles. First day title ever, and first time since eighty-four that we remain undefeated for a regular season. Football, there's a game at Cranston West High School on Saturday at seven o'clock. That's their last, like, division game. Then they're having like a fun game on Thanksgiving Day at Tiverton. This Friday at, I believe, eleven o'clock, there's gonna be Retevenance Day Ceremony at City Hall. And our Viking Battalion's gonna be there in their class A uniforms standing there and appreciating everybody's service. And there's gonna be a blood drive, which is my senior project, the November fifteenth, from eight-thirty to two, two-thirty PM. And I'd appreciate if y'all showed up. Teachers are first and faculty and school committee members. So you guys can just walk in. You're our first priority just because students are underage and they have to get out of class, and you guys have things to do. And also, the twenty-first at six forty-five PM, there's gonna be a senior volleyball showcase for the D-three South Division at NK. And our quarter one is ending, I believe, next week. So all the college applications are in process or have been submitted, which is a very, very nerve-wracking process. And I'm not sure if Maeve had mentioned this last meeting, 'cause I wasn't there. I had a volleyball game. I thought it'd be a really good idea if we had some kind of senior study hall. Like, it'd be like a half a credit for the beginning of the school year. So our seniors could have a time in school to get advice from our teachers and start like the FAFSA, the CSS Profile, and all the important stuff we need to get done for college and not just have to do it at home on our own with addition to our homework and our sports and jobs and stuff like that. That's all I'd say for that. And then Spear Week, we had that at the end of October. It's pretty much a success. We just wanna try to get more students involved. And homecoming, great success. We made a lot of money from that, and there was no trouble there. Everybody had fun.
Great. That's great. Great. Any questions?
Nice job.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, action items. Approval of the district's strategic plan for twenty-sixteen to twenty-twenty-one.
I make a motion to accept.
Second, second. Wait, we have to get the superintendent's recommendation first.
Oh.
It, it, my recommendation is to move the plan. Thank you.
Motion to accept.
Second. It's been moved in second discussion. Comments? Mr. Leary?
Ma'am, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion if I get a second. On first page, page one of eight, Early Childhood Education. I went to about six, seven different preschools, all different ones, from household ones to ones that pay, ones that are free. And to me, I can't support this as it is tonight without, I think we're gonna, if we, what I wanna do, I guess, make the motion first, to take in that where it says pre-K enrollment. Does anybody have that in front of them?
No.
Yes.
Okay, I wanna take out where it says expand and cross that out. And then jump to capacity and enrollment of all-day certified pre-K programs within the Newport Public Schools and cross that out. So now we'll start with support the community programs and preschool providers for three- or four-year-olds. So what I'm trying to do is stop from expanding to us and the public schools. My reasons for that is, number one, I went out to, one of the places I went to was out in, across from CCRI, I believe it's Head Start?
Head Start.
Yeah. And I spoke to the director and had a next half-hour conversation, sitting there, went through all things, very good. And she, she was not against us doing it, but her cost per pupil is eight thousand five hundred, she said, to do their program. And it costs nothing for the kids. She said our cost would be, if we opened a preschool program, fifteen thousand per student.
How would she know?
'Cause she's the director of the program.
And how would she know what our cost would be?
I asked her. I asked, I looked at her pupil cost. If you ask me Roger's pupil cost, it's over twenty thousand dollars. You know, but the general public classroom, we do it for the city, it's like fifteen grand. So that was one of my things. Another thing, I went to Club Tora. She was concerned, she has a lot of the educators' kids that go to their program, and they do very good. She was concerned that we'd not put it out of business because it's gonna be free if you get some programs in the city, but hurt our business. And I don't think the public schools, in my opinion, should be in a business to try and put private people out of business. I cannot and will not support with that in there. If you wanna work with the community programs and providers, I'm fine with that. So that would be my motion to amend it, to take out that one sentence. If there's a second.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Um, I'm gonna second it.
Discussion?
So, Mr., I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, you say it first, 'cause I'm just still pulling part of it up.
So, Mr. Leary, in essence, you would support the plan. You just, that's the one area.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I have a big deal with that concern. We don't know where, where we're gonna house these kids if we're gonna do it. Whereas a lot of things are filed with it. I think it concerns me. It concerns me that we're dealing with private people in this business. There's no way that I wanna put a private place out of business, especially some of these community people here. I mean, Club Tora's been in business for a long time, and I can tell you the truth. Most of our educators' kids go there, you know? They go to their program. And to go and try to cut it business or put it out of business, I can't support that. So that's why I need that out of there. The rest of it is fine. I think some little worded in there and things, I spend some time. But I don't think we should be in a business of expanding preschools by now when it's not required by law.
Okay.
And you can't, you never, last comment, you're never gonna convince me, anybody here, anybody else, that public education does a better job than private business, you know? And that's in preschool.
Okay. Can you repeat, 'cause I need to hear it exactly.
So what I wanna do is take out, where it says-
You're looking at the, not the detailed strategic, you're looking at the-
Pre-K program, it says, page one of eight, four point one, there's four point one on it.
It's, it's under the strategic initiatives, actions, and measures.
Okay, wait, I gotta go. That's my problem. That's why I couldn't find it.
Right. There's-
So the only thing I'm taking out-
Wait, wait, wait. Don't go there yet. You gotta, let me pull it up. The, you're talking, it's under the outcome update?
It's under the executive summary.
He wants to take out expand and support capacity.
It's an executive summary, Becky.
Executive summary. Oh, 'cause it's, it's not-
Move scratch out, 'cause I'm trying to take out.
It's also mentioned in another.
I can't support your motion, Mr. Leary. Pre-K is extremely important, especially for kids of poverty. I think if the public schools had a pre-K program for all kids, there are still parents who would send their children to private. And that's their privilege. They can afford it. But we have a very high poverty rate in Newport. I think sixty-seven percent. And we know from the program of baby steps that a lot of these kids are at home until they come into kindergarten. They come into kindergarten already behind. And the gap simply widens as they progress in school if they do not have early intervention.
So how do we know they're at home, Mrs. Gaines? That's my question.
Because we talk to the parents.
So you're, what you're saying to me, and I'm not trying to start an argument, but we have a hundred and seventy-five kids in kindergarten every year. Okay, you're saying that there's, how many more kids out there that don't go to preschool? Five, ten, hundred?
No, no, hundreds.
There's hundreds of kids out there. So why, why isn't our preschool, our kindergarten numbers up? By the way, East Providence has just done this, and they can't get the kids to fill programs. They got seven classes they started. They can't get the kids, 'cause they don't have the numbers. They do not have the numbers out there. You gotta show me the numbers. Show me that we have a hundred and seventy-five kids in kindergarten. Show me the number of the kids.
I can show you that now, but I know that it's true.
Right.
Because I attend the meetings. Wait, what, one minute? Is there another school committee person?
I'd rather, I'm, I'm, I heard from Hank and then I, I'm still a little confident.
Well, I'll get to Hank in a minute. Yes.
I just, I think, believe the plan identified one hundred and thirty-three at-risk kids. And I think that information might have come from Kids Count. Right, so.
Yeah.
So there's a hundred and thirty, besides the one seventy-five in kindergarten, there's a hundred and thirty-three more kids out there that didn't go to preschool.
They're at, the kids that should be in preschool.
MLK Center and all these other programs out there for free or income-based, they're still not going. There's a hundred and thirty-three more kids out there, you gotta tell me.
Yes.
So you're telling me that there's two hundred, over three hundred kids out there, over three hundred kids out there ready to go to preschool, kindergarten, or one seventy-five showing up?
How'd you get to three hundred?
'Cause we start one seventy-five at kindergarten every year, and if it's one thirty-three, imagine-
But we're talking about pre-K.
Yeah.
Right, but if we have pre-K grade four, and they're going to kindergarten, we have a hundred and seventy-five kids almost every year. Give or take, five or ten, fifteen kids. Now you're gonna tell me it's three hundred something?
Well, it's three and four-year-olds for pre-K.
Three and four-year-olds.
Three and four-year-olds.
So they're saying it could be half of that.
Okay.
Okay, Sandra, and then I'm going to be on-
Yeah, I'm looking at one page over here where it says early childhood education. And the way this, this is how it's worded, right here on the screen.
What page are you on?
I'm looking at the, where it says-
Dr. Flowers, we have several, there are three documents. Which document is it?
Which document am I on?
Here.
Four point one NSC twenty-sixteen eleven oh nine.
No, there's four documents. So are you on this one? This is the stra-
Strategic Initiatives, yeah.
Okay, the one you told me to go to she's on.
Yeah, okay, it's where it says one early childhood education.
Okay.
Then you go down, pre-K enrollment.
Yes.
And it's, it makes reference to the certified, the all-day certified pre-kindergarten programs within the Newport Schools and community programs, preschool providers. And then the next sentence, to work proactively with present providers and help support their efforts. So we're looking again at a collaboration, a cooperation and collaboration. And that, to continue this sort of thing.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
It seems that this is the way to go. We're encouraging, we're informing everyone of what is available. Keeping in mind, there's, I believe, Mrs. Gaines' reference, that there are many who really cannot afford
A private.
the, the very, very pricey ones, of course.
Okay.
So we're working with them. Eventually, keeping in mind that only, really, a few short years ago, kindergarten was not even mandatory to provide, and Newport was at least in the vanguard of having full-day K.
It still isn't.
Yeah.
Uh, Hank, would you go to the mic, please?
My name is Hank Niskern, and I was a facilitator with the Strategy Development Team. And I would just like to make a couple clarifications. The reason that this is in the plan is because of our scores in early childhood. And, and the teachers were the ones that really gave us the input here. And the teachers were saying, we need to kind of start kids earlier. We had, we need the capacity to start bringing in kids at three and four-year-olds, as well as the five-year-olds for kindergarten. And it, it does, it was not mandatory, but we don't have the capacity to do that. 'Cause we don't have capacity, we, we, I, I think you could say, Bobby, I think your point is that we have capacity for the K, the K-age kids, but we don't have capacity for the three- and four-year-olds. Now, the teachers were saying, it is almost impossible to bring kids up to third-grade level if they haven't had kindergarten. And even in kindergarten, we're still struggling. So we'd have to move it up a couple years. Also, the, as they did their research throughout the nation, we're seeing the same trend, is they are starting to have, again, the preschool programs at three- and four-year-olds because of the diversity of the students, and it is paying off. The cost, Bobby, Mr. Leary, was, you're, is about eight to ten thousand dollars. And it doesn't go up to, that's about the average. So I think that was a ballpark number we could use, and that's a good one. Now, and as Mrs. Flowers pointed out, that this was, again, a collaborative effort. It's, the students could go to a private school, could go to the public school. The real important things, the teachers were really emphasizing, is we need an earlier start of exposing these kids to a lot of concepts in order to be able to fulfill our expectations. Once they get behind, it is almost impossible to have them catch up. And then starts the long cycle of failure, truancy, bad behavior, which is, is pretty much predictable. So again, I just wanna point out that this is what the teacher said. It's not something that just kinda got dreamed up. It was backed up by research, and it was collaborative with the community.
So where's the research show me that there's a hundred and thirty-three kids out there that are not going to preschool?
Kids Count.
It was, it was, it came, it's not, it was identified as one hundred and thirty-three at-risk students, uh, children based upon Kids Count information.
They went through this, these problems, as you just made with failure. They can't fill the rooms. They cannot fill the classrooms. They told, same thing you're going down here, and they cannot fill the programs.
The, the teachers were saying they needed the capacity. They didn't, we did not have the capacity. And we, and if we kinda look at it, I think there is about a hundred and thirty-three kids for each year, each year, that fall under the classification of, of, at, at some kind of disadvantage. We do not have the capacity to take those on. And Bob, I mean, Mr. Leary, I think, and what their point was, if we don't get started in doing some of this now, there is no chance of ever breaking the cycle.
So you don't think that, you don't think that MLK Center, the, the, what's it one called? Just to mean that the CCRIs?
Um, Head Start.
Which is Head Start for nothing, MLK Center is income-based, and then private ones are not giving us enough, the right kids.
Correct. There's not the capacity.
So I can go over to Miss Club Tora tomorrow and see Jackie, Jackie Torres there and say, you're not doing your job.
No.
That would be, that would not be accurate. That would not be accurate.
That would be accurate. Hold on. But I will say, I met with the director of the Head Start, and she's a four-star program, which is a top-of-the-line.
How many four-stars do we have?
Five, is it? Five stars, I believe.
Five, five stars.
So she's a four-star program out there, which is a top-of-the-line program, is very close. And she has a lot of kids out there. So her program is very well-recognized, and it's free.
Well, and first, I guess what my points are, is we also interviewed her. It wasn't her, it was the prior director, and went over all the same material, how they structured the class, what the costs were, what the curriculum was, what the teaching style was, what were the issues, what were the roadblocks, what were the obstacles? And so that was factored in the report itself. So there's-
I just, I'd just like to emphasize too, in that reading, it says, "Expand and support the capacity and enrollment of all-day certified pre-kindergarten programs within the Newport Schools and community programs." Excuse me? And community programs. Okay? So we're talking about, as Hank said, collaborating with the community.
But it also does say capacity to enrollment all-day certified programs within, expand Newport Schools. So expand Newport Schools and, and community.
Expand and support the capacity within the schools and community.
Right, so that does, you are trying to expand the schools, program.
So, may I?
Which is not required by law.
May I?
Yes.
So the whole purpose of a strategic plan is to set a roadmap and a direction of going forward. There is not a definitive implementation of one must. And if anything and everything we do has to be approved by the Newport School Committee. So if we did follow your scenario, and I hear your caution, Mr. Leary, about expanding programs in the Newport Public Schools when we have community partners, great community partners, and that's really what we want to focus on, is to fill the, fill those programs, work with those partners. And then, if needed, as just as Head Start has recently done, they've opened another one, and they're not full. I agree with you. They're not full. But they expanded another program based upon the numbers that we received from Rhode Island Kids Count. And we also have census data, but that census data is very old. So my point is, if there's a language change that is necessarily, necessary because there's a thinking that we must expand, I'm just saying, that's not what we're doing here with the strategic plan. What we're saying is, we know through, as Mr. Nurseon just mentioned, especially working with teachers and reading the research, that the sooner we can address young children prior to kindergarten that don't have different experiences that others maybe of a higher income may have or that are in a different setting, we have opportunities throughout the city working with our partners, MLK, Tora Club, all of them, and working with them to help to make sure as many of our students as possible get into pre-K programs. And pre-K, again, as Ms. Sylvia shared with us, is ages three and four. So that's very important, too. I think right now, we need to focus on where we are with our schools having children kindergarten-ready as best as possible. But as I stated in the presentation last week and the PowerPoint, it's really about setting a roadmap, setting guidance for this superintendent and the team to do the work that you want us to carry out. And that's what this is all about. If it's a matter of changing a word or two, it's not gonna be, make a big difference. But one of the things we do need to do is, we need to start working and moving this forward. We've already started, you know, focusing on kindergarten readiness, summer slides, summer meals, using data across the board, and we're working and having consistent conversations as far as calibrating with all our pre-K programs. So we're all on the same page when we're talking about what is good quality education in three and four. But we need to just, you know, let the work, I need the work groups to start getting together and going forward. And that's-
But it does say expand, the key says expand the programs within the Newport Schools. I can, I'll support it with that out.
And community.
And community. So take out the Newport Schools and put support and expand the community programs. I'm fine.
We have expanded programs already that are after-school programs, and that's part of us as well.
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
This is why Mr. Nurseon is a facilitator.
I think, I think I understand what Mr. Leary's concern is, and it's legitimate. I think if we, if the wording change that would, are you okay? The wording change I would suggest would be that expand the capacity for early childhood education within Newport and not specify, 'cause there's never any intent to specify that it would be in the schools or private or maybe other programs we hadn't anticipated. It was just that ability that the teachers were asking for, to have the potential to expand the capacity for preschool. Because that was the only way they felt that they could break the cycle.
That sounds, that sounds like a solution.
Well, it's gotta say, community programs.
Within Newport.
Just within Newport, not the schools.
Right.
Expand the capacity for preschool, early childhood education within Newport.
Does that work for you, Bobby?
I, I don't know if you people have this problem with, I have a real problem with our, with our private business out there. I think they, I mean, I know MLK has problems with this, and a lot of people do. I think, to me, it's to say, to support the community programs, preschool programs of three, four-year-olds and kindergarten. Keep, get out within the Newport Schools. Get out of the Newport Schools. It's not our business. We're not required to do that except for special ed.
But that means that, that would mean, here's the problem with that. That means that the private sector has to support, has to be able to provide that capacity.
We don't have prob, we don't, we're private sectors now. Colleen just said we have tons of community private businesses.
We have to have the capacity. If they can provide it, great. If we can provide part of it, great. If we can provide part of it, great. It doesn't, it doesn't eliminate anybody, we just have to have the capacity within the Newport community.
So show me the capacity of 133 more kids. Show me that number.
Bobby, Bobby.
I don't understand.
Can I make a suggestion? If I'll make a motion first, to see if it even gets seconded.
We got one motion.
There is a motion on the floor, I'm sorry.
I've got a motion to take that out and second it.
My discussion would be that, and I hear what the superintendent says, we need to get, work with the committee and make some guidance. We are, we have an elected committee, we have a couple people that we're not sure who's going to remain or who's going to exit. I would suggest, and this is up to you guys, if we just hold this to the next meeting until the committee is in and realigned, it's going to be that committee, or the new committee, or the moving-forward committees document that they're going to live and breathe under. There was a lot of work done on this. I went to the presentation a couple weeks ago at the Pell School. A lot of teachers put a lot of time and effort into this thing, so I think that, I don't see the harm in it, if we just hold it till the next regular meeting, but that's just a suggestion. There's a motion on the floor that needs to be dealt with first, and I don't know.
We have a motion on the floor. Yes, Mr. Carlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The vice chairman is absolutely correct.
Pardon?
I applaud the vice chair for his suggestion. And might I, Mr. Vice Chair, might I use your idea and formally amend the motion on the floor, with your permission, Mr. Vice Chairman?
Well, it's not my motion.
It's Mr. Leary's motion.
Well, I will offer a, I will offer a amendment to Mr. Leary's motion, using the vice chairman's well-thought-out proposal. I would make a amendment, I formally move an amendment to the motion on the floor to delay this proposed vote until the next formal meeting of the Newport School Committee.
First, we will deal with Mr. Leary's motion to amend the language.
Move to table Mr. Leary's motion. With due respect to my friend, in order to put the next motion up.
I'll set it in. I seconded its motion.
It's been seconded. So, so my concern, just like, like I, I can still see there's some angst and some difference.
Mrs. Bowlen, I apologize.
You can't talk when they table.
Yeah, I sincerely apologize to you. I apologize. A move to table is a non-debatable motion. And I apologize.
Are you seconding?
I, I second the motion.
All in favor of tabling?
Tabling what?
To the next, yeah.
The, the whole thing, I assume.
No. I have a question. I'm not going to vote on something if I don't know what I'm, what it's about. Are we moving to table the decision to accept this?
No, his motion, Bobby's motion.
Oh, Bobby's motion.
Bobby's motion, first of all.
Okay, fine.
So. I don't, I, you know.
Yeah.
I like to take things one at a time, and these series of amendments does nothing but add confusion here.
Yeah, exactly.
Bobby had a very clear amendment to the proposed language. Why can't we deal with that? Why does there have to be an amendment to the amendment to the amendment?
Because there was, Madam Chair, with great respect, there was a move to table, I made that move, Ms. Sylvia seconded that. It's a non-debatable motion.
Takes away Bobby's motion, basically.
I call the vote, Madam Chair.
On the strategic plan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
What did you just vote on?
Roll call vote, please, Madam Chair.
What did you just vote on?
On Bobby's motion.
No, we voted on Bobby's motion. To table Bobby's motion, that's what we just voted on. Kathy, will you call it?
So just table a motion, table the whole thing?
No, table Bobby's motion.
To table Bobby's motion.
Mr. Carlin made a motion to table Mr. Leary's motion, seconded by Mrs. Sylvia. Mrs. Bowlen, Mr. Hanos, Mrs. Sylvia, Mr. Leary, and Mr. Carlin voted for, Mrs. Gaines and Mrs. Flowers voted against.
So the motion passed.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No.
We have the motion.
No. Leave another motion.
We have another motion on the floor.
You already have it.
The motion is to accept the strategic plan.
And who made that one?
And this, I, I think we should realize, the strategic plan is a living document. It's, as the superintendent said, it gives us a pathway for improvement. It's not written in stone. We are constantly reviewing, updating where necessary, and making the necessary adjustments. We have been working on this plan, this committee initiated this plan, worked on it, and I think we should be the body that accepts it. It can be changed by another committee, if they so see fit.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Carlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With great respect to my friends, Mr. Leary and Mrs. Bowlen, the reason I did what I just did is in order to get us to where we are right now, to deal with the proposal that is in front of us. We have procedural matters that had to be dealt with, and I think I appropriately dealt with those, and I thank my colleagues for allowing me to deal with those. So with regard to the matter before us, I propose an amendment, I'm sorry. With regard to the matter before us, that is, the acceptance of the strategic plan, I propose, as my colleague, the vice chairman suggested earlier, prior to us getting through the other Roberts Rules of Order necessities, my colleague, Mr. Hanos, the vice chairman, suggested that we put this off until the new committee comes on board. And I think that's an excellent idea. So I would propose that the members of the committee, I would propose a formal amendment to the motion that is on the floor to accept the strategic plan. I would propose an amendment that would require us to delay dealing with acceptance of the strategic plan until the next formal meeting of the Newport School Committee. I think that my colleague, Mr. Hanos, vice chairman, is correct. Let's leave this to the next committee. I think Mr. Hanos is absolutely correct, and I would propose that as a, as a formal motion. And I would ask for a second. Second.
One of the concerns about this committee, or from the committee members, I have heard, we never seem to get anything accomplished. Things get pushed off, they get delayed, we have to come back to them again and again. And things that usually, especially after months and months of work, after delaying the vote to have a presentation, after redrafting and rewriting, we delay again. I just want to bring to the attention of this committee, I have been addressed individually at times about how things sometimes do not move forward, or why do we spend such an inordinate amount of time on things. And I just share this as an example going forward. That's all I want to say.
Madam Chair?
Mistress, you've addressed it, it's Mrs. Flowers, Dr. Flowers.
If, as many of us in this past several months were saying that we are here for the students and for the people of the city of Newport. If we really mean when we say to the teachers, "We have your back, we're supporting you." And the number of teachers who put input into this strategic plan, as well as community people, and people who are sitting right here now, to delay it when there will be a minimal change in the makeup of the school committee, I don't know why we cannot be forthcoming and courageous enough to get this going right now. Too much work has been put into it to delay it and delay it and delay it. I was very much aware it was going on a few minutes ago.
The notes.
And I don't like what I saw. So I, I feel that at this point, we should go right ahead, accept this, as you said, as Mrs. Gaines said, a strategic plan is a living document, it's a lot of other plans of this nature. And things can be edited and inserted as we go along. Let's just do it, get it done, and then move forward.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Bowlen?
Yeah, well, I didn't want to see it cannibalized. Like, I just kind of, I agree that, that, you know, I put all my inputs, I read it last week, I did really put them in. I still have, I have the same concern, Bobby, but I also feel rest assured that we can fix that as we go along. As, because we've asked for a study to find out exactly how many kids it is in Newport when they get to kindergarten. And I know we haven't gotten that yet, but I know that I'm going to be on the committee for the next two years, and I'm not going to, Bobby, I'm not going to let it go, okay? So I'll keep my eye on that, you know, whether you're on it or not, you know, and so, and I too sat through 22 meetings. Of the strategic plan, and I feel like it's far enough along right now where, you know, it's got to be a working, it needs to be a, yeah, it needs to be a working document.
I guess, Mrs. Bowlen, the concern would be like, if we just take Club Tora, who has less kids a year from now, you're going to be able to tell her that, well, we got kids, I don't know what her fees is, I didn't ask her her fees, but if her fees is X amount of dollars, the dollars is going to be zero, she's going to lose some kids.
Right, Bobby.
She's going to lose some kids.
Bobby, what I'm saying is that, that someone would have.
That's what Jackie tells me personally, point blank. She says to me, "I doubt I'll go out of business, but I'm going to lose some kids."
I, but my point here is that I will not let the, somebody has to prove to me that we need extra spots for kids for free, and that we could fill them before I would ever, before I would ever vote to expend, expend the money to make it happen, okay?
Where you going to put it at?
Well, we may not need it. We, I, I agree with your point 100 percent. We've got to figure out exactly what we need. But we need to, you know, to figure that out, and I truly believe I'm going to be able to have a vote on here, to be able to change that as we go along, if we do not need the capacities at this point. And I, I, all, and everything I wrote about when I was running for office, talked about the strategic plan, and how that was going to be our guiding light, and I, you know what, right now, I can't, you know, I was, I just can't watch it go down.
You have a closing statement?
Don't have a closing statement, not at all. I think what I'd like to remind my colleagues of is the importance of respecting the voters' wishes. The voters put a new committee into place, very similar to what they did two years ago. And what the school committee two years ago did was the school committee on November the 9th, 2014, voted to put a new principal in at Rogers High School. A decision that should have been made. A decision that should have been made.
No, you're out of order. That has nothing to do with the motion on the floor.
A decision that should have been made by the new committee.
Move the question. Do we vote?
All in favor of moving the question?
Just a clarification, so there is a motion on the floor. Make sure we know which way we're voting when we say aye to it. The.
The motion is to move the question.
The motion to move the question, Madam Chair, with a good point of order here, I apologize, it's non-debatable. There's a motion on the floor to move the question. We cannot debate that question.
And the question is, yes, that we accept the strategic plan?
We've, we've moved the question, so.
The question.
Point of information, Madam Chair. Point of information.
Go ahead.
Thank you. For the committee, for the public, for those. Madam Chair, I understand you can't stand this. You don't like it. Madam Chair, no, no, Madam Chair, you don't like it when I bring up points of order that are appropriate. I understand what you're saying.
The question.
We've, yes, we've moved the question.
I have a point of information before the, before the chair. I'd like my point of information addressed, please. I would like my point of information addressed, thank you. My point of information for the committee, for those in attendance, for those in the viewing audiences, what we are voting on, what we are voting on is to stop debate.
Yes.
The, the, move the question, move the question was to stop debate.
Yes.
It is to go ahead and vote on the motion.
No, no, you're wrong. Ms. Sylvia, you're wrong. The, the, the motion to move the question is to stop debate. Will you, will you people, will you people please learn Roberts Rules of Order? The motion to move the question is to stop debate.
We move the question.
So what is, what is, question, how many votes does that take?
That's a two-thirds majority. So the motion is before us. I want to make sure that the public understands this.
All in favor of the motion to move the question?
So you want to continue?
I said I would never vote.
No, you promised him you wouldn't.
Not him, Mrs. Flowers.
Excuse me, the motion has been, the motion has been moved, seconded, and voted on, and the motion failed.
Yes, the motion failed. So we'll discuss this for how long?
As long as it's appropriate. The motion was on the table to stop debate. And, and, Mr. Main, are you sighing as well? You don't like the debate, the public debate?
Mr. Carlin, I don't think there's any further, anything further to debate. You've had your say.
What, no, listen, what you people, what you people, what, what you know that you are doing is suppressing debate, you have done that continually.
Keep the debate on the strategic plan.
What is the debate? What is it to debate?
The question before us was to whether or not to shut off debate.
It's over.
It's over.
I understand, I fully understand that. I'm the one who made.
Now, the original motion.
I'm the one who pointed out what the, the vote you were taking is.
When our debate is over.
The original motion on the floor was to accept, in principle, the strategic plan.
With great, with great respect, that is not what is before us. Before us is the question of whether to accept the strategic plan or not. It is not an in-principle situation. It is to accept or not to accept.
Do we vote on it?
No, we, we need to, we just had the vote of whether to vote on it or not. We will continue debate on this, whether you like it or not, Ms. Sylvia.
Who's debating?
And here, here.
You are pontificating, orating, doing whatever.
Ms. Sylvia, we had an election yesterday. It's, it's over. This, this is over. There's no pontificating, no any.
What are you doing then?
I am trying to uphold the rule of Roberts Rules of Order. I'm trying to have a serious meeting here. We are discussing whether or not to have. All right, listen. I think you understand what I'm saying.
I wish I did.
No, make it a little clearer, please. Do you want to discuss the merits of this, of the strategic plan?
I think you understand, and if you don't understand, maybe, I, I thought you had a doctorate. I thought you were well-educated.
Oh, I am extremely well. I'm asking you.
I thought you understood the, the rules of participation.
We have a motion on the floor.
Floor, to accept, yeah.
To accept or reject.
That's it, that's enough.
The strategic plan as it's been presented to us or not.
That is not correct. That is not the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to whether or not to put the vote off until the next meeting, which is why I question, I mean, if, if everybody is so smart, how come they don't understand what the motion on the floor is? The motion on the floor is to whether or not to delay it till the next meeting.
I would agree that that was the motion. That was the one clarification that I was asking for, to expedite this before the ladies or the, the people were getting ready to vote. I do agree with the fact that the motion on the floor was to hold off. We need to deal with that first, and we could have cut right to the chase to do such. But I understand the question. That was originally my question, was before I go ahead and vote, am I voting to hold off or move forward?
Okay.
So I think we need to deal with that one first, and then move forward.
Can we still discuss the merits of that?
There was a second to that motion?
Which motion, I'm sorry?
To move, to delay.
To delay.
There was.
The motion to delay voting on the. Voting on the strategic plan. All in favor of delaying the vote on the strategic plan, please raise your aye. Two. Opposed? Five. The motion fails.
I moved to.
Back to the original motion.
Yeah, okay. Now, the original motion is.
The original motion was to accept the plan before us. All in favor?
That was, yeah, that was seconded.
It was moved and seconded and we have had endless discussion.
Right.
All in favor? Five. Opposed? Two. Next item. Bobby, the next four items. Two, three and four.
Sorry, I get that.
That's five.
Can we, can we, I'd like to make a motion each one of them. Am I doing individual, I guess?
You can do it individual.
All right, 4.2, like the first one. I would like to make a motion to continue to the next meeting.
Second.
All in discussion? All in favor? Aye. 4.3.
I would like to make the same motion, um, I want people to look at the wording closely before they do it, but make a motion to continue to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
4.4, same thing, make a motion to continue to the next meeting.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Finally, 4.5, make the same motion to continue to the next meeting.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you. Approval of minutes, the consent agenda, personnel actions, request home instruction. Would anyone like to remove that?
I move the consent calendar be adopted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the consent calendar be adopted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Reports, repo, opposed? None. Reports from superintendent and staff.
So my fault. Um, in the consent agenda, is that the budget in this consent agenda?
No.
No, sorry, you're right, thank you. I'm getting that now, yeah. Just turn the pages here.
Colin, do you want to, um, accept or comment on any of?
I just moved that the committee accept the reports as presented.
Is there a motion?
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
This is, so we're down to meeting dates.
Meeting dates, um.
Um, we could, I'm sorry, my fault again, I'm trying to get, my, my fault, Mrs. Gaines. So in the, in this meeting, accepted, was the, was that the budget?
Yes.
Okay, so if I can make, backtrack or no? So if the public wants to know, we have, and sorry, the business manager probably misled by me. We had a talk before the meeting and she figures I didn't have any questions because I was leaving here and I think she, she only hangs out for me and she left. So I'm at fault here 100 percent. I don't know why she left. I didn't, I mean, that's fine, that's what it is.
I think she did think, Mr. Leary, you were all set, so she did go home. I don't know why she left.
I think I haven't said right. So I think what people should know is where we're at for last year. We need to discuss that. We couldn't, Mrs. Gaines. It, it shows for last year that, and I'm going to pull it up right now, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I think it's 700 some thousand dollar surplus. So we have.
Today.
Fund balance.
Seven, fund balance, thank you. We have a 729,000 dollar fund balance for the year 2016. It just ended in July, June 30th. Part of, part of that 750 is 250,000 that we already allocated into this year's budget, okay? So basically, we have about 400 and whatever that number is, 75,000 left over.
Right, right, right under 500.
Again, I would, I would, I would just let the people know, I think, this is my personal opinion, is I'm not going to be here to address that, but I think with the 475,000 left over, you should take a serious look at starting a contingency fund for your budget. I'm very fan of that, whatever you want to discuss with that. I can say this one happened one other time in 2011. Mrs. Gaines was here, I don't know if Miss Flowers was here in 2011?
Yeah.
You were here. In 2011, we had 1.2 million dollars left over for our surplus. I pushed very hard and called it to get four votes, to put that money into the unfunded liability. So we can help address the unfunded liability and that was done. So I'm not saying do that now because that's, that's been addressed by negotiations, but I still think you should, and it's not my vote, it's not my concern, I still think with the 475,000 that you have of, of fund balance, you should look at establishing a contingency fund going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Leary.
And that, I think some of that would be addressed when we look at the policy changes.
Becky? So one of the things we learned from School Committee 101 is that we should never use one-time monies or, or fund balances to balance the budget.
That's right.
So I will never advocate for that again and you can use it for one-time expenses. So if we wanted to add computers, wanted to put it towards the unfunded liability, that's. Yeah, so we just, no, that's what, how it should be used is one-time expenses. So I'm glad that, I'm really happy that we were able to come out with, with a, a balance, but it just can't be used to fund the.
Okay.
And if, if then that counts, discussion more thing after, sorry, if you're going to start a budget. Okay, so 7.5, I missed that too. This is my fault again, I'm sorry. I wanted to just make a note on the absences and toddies. It appears that Rogers High School is making a significant difference between 15 and 16.
They're improving.
Improving, exactly. Thank you. That's what I was looking for. They're improving. So it's, 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 that's good. I mean, we changed the time. You know, I'm not sure that's part of it, we've been told it's not, but, you know.
The bus company, oh, sorry. The bus company definitely thinks it is, because now we have full buses in the morning for our high school students.
So I mean, it's a huge difference. It's not, it's not shown at Pell and it's not shown at Thompson, but Rogers is showing a definite improving in attendance, tardiness and absenteeism.
Okay, suggested meeting dates. Our next regular meeting is December 13th. And that will be the first meeting of the new school committee. And I must say, if I say it's been a pleasure, I would not be telling the truth. But I'm glad it's my last meeting. Thank you all.
This is not your last meeting.
My last meeting as chair. I have earned my purgatory merits. I will entertain a motion.
Catholic religion school.
I will. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, thank God. Well, I will recommend to the next school committee meeting that, to the next school committee that you be appointed as our community person on the strategic plan committee.